Terrific.
Hey, Tom, it's Willie, I'm here.
Oh, great.
Um, I, I need to ask, um, who, uh, uh, who's gonna take the minutes and how is this gonna attendance and all that, Tom?
So I will do, I'll do minutes, attend, this is my first maiden voyage without Mary Ann, so I apologize for every mistake I have made and will continue to make. But I'm gonna do all the minutes and all that stuff.
It's okay, it's okay, we totally get it. Everybody's been in that spot one time or another, I'm sure.
Okay, so you want me to go?
Attendance. Okay, so attendance, yes.
And, hey, we have Michelle here. We, Willie, you're here?
I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and Barbara, you're still here?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Alice, am I missing Alice anywhere? Alice? Hold on. Alice just said yes to me. Where are you? Hey, Phil, can you try to find Alice? She's somewhere in the Neverland.
I'm looking, um.
Alice, are you on?
I see an "an". That's not Alice.
No.
I do not see her up, there's a... No, there's... Sorry.
Oh, there she is. Look at us, we have a full boat. You have a crew, Ian.
Terrific, thank you. Alright, so you took attendance? Do we have any general public?
The attendees appear to be all town employees. I don't think there's any of the actual public.
Okay, I think they're only want to make comments in the appropriate items on the agenda.
Okay, and I'll let them in as you guys let me know which ones go where, etc.
Okay, thank you. Terrific. Um, okay, new business. Item number one. Uh, request to advertise, test, and recruit for mechanic golf course. Um.
We have, ma'am chair, we have Andrew Fries, who is the, uh, property manager, the superintendent of the golf courses.
Right.
He is here, so can we let him in, Phil?
He is in now.
Okay. So mechanic golf course, um, we have had, um, we had somebody, um, acting in the position, we... The person who was doing it, um, left, and then there was a whole changeover in, um, in the leadership in the golf course. And so we kind of had somebody filling in for a while until the, until Andrew Fries is now ready to hire that position. And so he is, he's asking us to advertise, test, and recruit. I sent you guys a job description.
Right.
I, I talked to Andrew, uh, before, Andrew has answered if you have any questions for him. I talked to Andrew before and we went over the, what's important there, and it seems to me that probably, um, the, the best way... I asked him if there was a way to do a test, like, you know, of the, an actual physical test, you know, like something fixing something, this and that. And he didn't think that was, uh, the smartest thing to do. He actually thinks their experience, and especially their experience in doing things like grinding... Believe me, I don't know what this "nuff" means. Sharpening and grinding things, um, in golf courses, that is very important to the job. And having experience in, in, and working on equipment related to golf, like, you know, lawn mowers and...
Mm-hmm.
That's a really bad way of explaining what the story is, so.
Okay, could I make a comment here? Because in the past, when we have had, um, um, tests that weren't exactly like standard academic kind of written tests, we would, um... Take, for instance, I'll use this, um, give him a couple of saws that need sharpening or something like that, just to say that, um, there was some kind of measure in terms of... You know, I don't know what to say to you, but it's a, it's a, it's a can-do job. It's not a desk job, so to speak. So whenever, my recollection, and Michelle, you can correct me, because I think you're the only veteran here, oh wait, Barbara, um, that we actually... I mean, I remember Mary Ann talking about somebody had to pick something up and bring it over here and, you know, whatever. My suggestion.
So Andrew, if we, um, do you think you could put together with me, we would not work together on some sort of, um, physical test that maybe...
Yeah.
Maybe we do like something like 75% experience and training and 25% physical test of some kind. Andrew, do you think you could put something together that would, like, maybe have them demonstrate that he can, the person, he or she can sharpen, um, whatever it needs to be?
Yeah, I definitely, I definitely... Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just sorry, just making sure. We definitely can put together a test. Uh, I believe the, the people that would... Apply for this job would have experience, and I could reference their, their employers to make sure. If we brought them on to test, which is the most, let's call it job-specific thing, that's kind of a niche for golf courses on the grinding... Would we be covered if something happened from an injury or something like that, if they, they came in, yeah, I know how to do it, but, you know, something happens. I don't want to open, uh, liability like that, but...
I just... I don't really care how it's maneuvered. My only concern, and I really don't have a horse in this race, but, um, my only concern is that we do have a procedure, and it is, you know, test... The, the word "test" is in there, and so however it looks, or whatever you think would be appropriate, I don't want to, um, you know, change the rules, so to speak.
Yeah, we, we could definitely do, bring the candidates in and have a, let's call it a dry run on what the, a few things would be to do, not actually do it, and say, ask them questions. What would you do here? What would you do here?
Good, perfect.
Bring in an experienced mechanic, and between him and my, him or her, and my knowledge, we could, we could say, hey, this guy knows what to do, actually doing, I guess he wouldn't have to.
Okay, you could even make it a part of an interview, so to speak. Um, one or two examples, I mean, just so that we can say, this was our test. If they didn't like it, oh well, but at least we did test.
Yeah.
Okay, so first of all, to answer Andrew's question, we are, we would be covered, our insurance would cover us on that.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be workers comp, because they wouldn't be employee yet, uh, he or she, but, um, but it would, we'd be covered for, if God forbid, something happens, so, but Andrew, don't let something happen.
Yeah, right.
So, can I suggest 75% experience and training and 25% a physical test?
Yep. So, I like that, could. I have a motion that we, uh, advertise in appropriate places, uh, test, uh, depending on, uh, what Mr. Fries decides, and, uh, recruit for mechanic golf course.
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Michelle. Great, thank you both.
Who's second? I'm sorry? Allison?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was looking away for a second, okay. Did you need a vote, I think?
Yes. I was waiting for you to finish writing. All in favor? Think you find by saying aye, or raising your hand, or whatever.
Aye.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, great.
Look, I got one done. Yay!
Something happened here. Oh, I think I'm writing on my computer. Oh, yes, I am. Okay, thank you. Um, on to the next approved eligibility list for the HR, and we did get that. Yes. And in the past, our eligibility list always was, because we can't sign it, I have something going on with my computer, sorry. Um, so we would send an email confirming.
Um, so if, if you want to do that, or if everyone just says yes here, I'll mark it in the minutes. I think that would probably cover it, do you think?
I, I don't know. Yeah, I would say so. I mean, whatever action we take at these meetings, um, has, is legal, so, and it's being recorded, so certainly, that's a good idea. Fine, I'm fine with it, if everyone else is.
So if everybody could just say yes to the eligibility list?
Yeah, hold on, I'm just trying to pull it out. Okay, um, so we are now, uh, approving the eligibility list for, um, HR manager. Um, would everybody signify by saying aye if they are signing, so to speak, or agreeing with this list?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Um, just for a little back, thank you, everybody, just for a little background, um, this is the Mary Ann job. Um, and Mary Ann, by the way, has been unbelievably helpful, even in retirement. Thank God for Mary Ann. Um, but so we, based on you approving this list, uh, we're going to make an offer to Steve LaBrandy. Um, he's currently the HR manager in New Haven, so I'm just giving you a little, little background, and we're hope to have him on by September. Um, I will say this, um, the, the second person could be Sha Campbell, interviewed very well, she'd had a great conversation, um, about how she probably wasn't going to be getting the job, but we really encouraged her to apply, uh, for another job, because she really... She did a lovely job, she just doesn't have the depth and experience in HR, but there could be other positions here for her, so just wanted to give you a heads up that...
Oh, terrific, that's good.
You're two solid candidates.
Great. Okay, great. Um, on to number three. Uh, eligibility list for assistant town clerk. And would everyone signify by saying aye if they are in agreement with the assistant town clerk eligibility list? Um, as stated here in the document that Tom sent us. Aye.
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 Okay, great, that's everyone, perfect. Okay, stepping right along here.
Thank you. And just as a 30 seconds on that, the, we got five candidates that all have real town clerk experience, ranging three years to much, to many, many years. So I'm confident we're gonna get somebody out of that list, thank you.
Okay.
Not every list is that way these days, so...
Could I ask a quick question? I see that 16 people were disqualified, that's a big chunk of candidates, I would think. What happened?
So there, there is a requirement i- in the job description that you have to have town clerk experience, and we're getting a, um... So i- if you're aware that there's a certain bank that may be, um, merging to another bank, and we're getting a lot of people from that world applying to a lot of positions.
Interesting.
And good, good for them, but they don't qualify sometimes, so we're, so maybe, you get what I'm saying? So you get a lot of people applying to positions that they aren't really qualified for.
Okay, terrific.
Nice way of saying it.
Yeah, yeah, I, we get it. Um, and finally, for eligibility, uh, for maintenance, uh, for public works. And again, if everyone was signify by saying aye if they are in agreement with the eligibility list for maintain, 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 maintainer for, um, that we have in front of us, and I say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that's everyone, great.
And that was just a promotional, um, we did not, and Mary Ann, that, that Mary Ann did that. Um, just FYI'd, everybody, we had not done promotionals in public facilities for years, and it was just destroying morale, and with George Strata here, who's being goal, is, as you guys know, we had that long meeting, and this is the first... Of many that are gonna come through for promotions, so this is a good...
Very good. Great, 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 that's very good. Alright. Um, next item, uh, request waiver of testing for administrative assistant bill, building department.
Um, we would like, I'd like Bob Dunn to get in. Uh, Phil, can you grab Bob Dunn for us?
I promoted him now.
Awesome. Bob, you there? Oh, there he is, okay. Bob Dunn is our building official, so he would be, he is the, he runs that department building. So I'm gonna talk generally for a second about the two requests. I'm gonna be very honest, this is, this is a, and probably will tell you that this is a, this is a rare request, throwing it to you guys, it's your decision as to what you guys, what you do. Um, generally, civil service requires us to test for every position, right? The format of the test, how we test, is a very, it can vary tremendously by, by, uh, position. There are two examples of people that have been, uh, two employees that are here, and that they're kind of odd duck situations, and let me explain them. Both of them have been doing a job that's above their job for a significant period of time, and, um, we have had, I've had lengthy conversations with the unions about what to do about this. And the unions, uh, we finally came down to, to, so I love the position that I cannot just sign a union agreement, giving these people these jobs. Even though they've done them for a while, um, and they're qualified for them, um, I can't just do that because civil service controls that. So the union and I agreed that I would bring to civil service, and the union is completely in favor for these two positions, of just giving them the jobs without going through the testing process, but that is your decision. Um, we just, we just fought for these two employees in these positions. They have been doing the work for a significant period of time in the higher position, and it, it's kind of seems unfair to knock them out... Potentially knock them out, uh, in a, in a, with a civil service test. I understand this would be different, it really would be, but I do want to go to the building, um, the building, job administrative assistant building, I want to turn over to Bob to let him give you his take on it. By the way, Bob is the union president, but of a different party.
So, thank you, um, like Tom said, my name is Bob Dunn, I've worked for the Town of Trumbull as a building official for 18 years. Um, Laura Vargas has worked as a clerk in the building department for 12 years, and her knowledge, skills, and dedication are just vital to our department. Uh, Laura helped us immensely to get through the difficult period of, uh, having to run the department remotely during, uh, COVID. Um, when, when the Lombard, our administrative assistant retired on February 4th, after over 20 years of service to the town, Laura stepped up and took over all the responsibilities of the position. Uh, she's been acting administrative assistant now for almost seven months. Um, her familiarity with the permit process is in all the state of Connecticut requirements make her indispensable to our department. Our department deals with, uh, permitting software and processes that are different from a lot of the other departments, and it just requires someone with experience and the knowledge. Um, and at this time, we're in the height of our busy season, and it would just be very difficult to have to train someone new. And, you know, when technically we already have the most qualified person to, uh, fill the position. Um, I respectfully ask that Laura be promoted to fill the vacant administrative assistant position.
Um, I have a couple of questions. When she was acting, did she receive any kind of compensation?
Um, she was given 10% for working out of classification.
So there was an agreement, okay, fine. And, um, the second thing I want to say is that with her expertise and her knowledge, and her, all the years she worked for the town, um, I think under experience and training, we can give her... Points for that, and, um, but it still does not, that would help her to, um, secure the position, perhaps. Um, and at the same time, civil service wouldn't have to, you know, circumvent the rules.
Right, well, back in, back in...
I thought about this.
Excuse me, back in 2005 or '06, I believe, when Helen Johnson, the previous administrative assistant retired, um, the town did, and the civil source, or did come to an agreement to promote Linda administratively, just because of the requirements and the knowledge that she had to do the job. Um, it would just be very difficult to have to train somebody else than just, you know, the 12 years of knowledge that Laura gained by working side by side with Linda.
If I could interrupt one quick second, um, ma'am chairman, uh, the union president, Pete Robertine, is actually on, so if we, if you want to bring him in, you can, if you have any questions for him, it's up to you guys, or let, let him speak about this issue.
I think this is the issue, I think this problem can be solved, and I think the solution comes in the experience and training piece. I mean, the one thing we can do is we can, I mean, we give credit for people who have served in the armed forces, we give cred, you know, so that we can make this so that her... Knowledge and expertise, um, and loyalty to the town is rewarded within the confines of the, um... Of our rules and regulations, or what we, you know, um, have to abide by, and I understand that there may have been in the past an, an incident of this happening. Um, I, I don't know about that, but here and now, I, I really feel uncomfortable, um, having a waiver, uh, in our rules. And so, um, what do you think about that?
There's one little, just a little bit of a complication, um, and by the way, we could solve this complication if you want. The, this position is part of the admin series test, so in order for us to make any specific changes to it, we'd have to, you, you guys would have to just approve i- it being removed from the admin series, which is... I think is justified this, in this position, this, uh, but it's up to you guys, so we could do, remove it from, you could take a vote to remove it from the admin series. And then I could test it individually, because make it, um, 100% experience, training experience with points for, um, for the, obviously the points would, experience would be there, and then we could do it that way if you want.
Let me ask this, if we have an eligibility list from the admin series, um, would it be poss... Hypothetically, would it be possible for you, uh, Mr. Dunn, to go to that list and select the best candidate possible, and, um... And have that person, sir, if you're talking that this is so highly specialized, that that might not be possible, which is why, um... I like the idea of taking it out of the admin, uh, series if it wouldn't be appropriate for this job. Excuse the phone, I'm sorry.
No, I, I agree with Tom, I think it would be totally appropriate, because it is specialized kno- knowledge that's needed for this job.
Okay, alright. So, um, let's have a little discussion about that with, um, I've been talking with the members of the board, and see what people think about that.
Um, if we removed it, if we re- removed that position from the admin series, how, how would we test? What would we test as?
Yeah, that's, mm-hmm, go ahead, Tom.
So, uh, I mean, if you did that, um, there's, we could do, I mean, you know, we could do like a experience and training, give that 75%, and then 25% test, and, and, uh, Bob Dudd and I could figure out what that test was, do you know what I mean? Cause, so the admin series, and this is where we get, we get into this issue all the time here, is that, you know, we test all admins, but we give Excel, and we give Word, and...
Right, I get it.
And some positions in that admin series, and this is one, that, that's not so important for that, do you know what I mean? It's more important that they know how to use whatever his building systems are, do you know what I mean? I don't even know what that is, but... So we could come up with something 75% experience and training, and 25%, Bob and I will come up with a test, I think we could probably do that, and turn that around relatively quickly. Cause, another point, another point, by the way, we, we have not done the admin series, admin series this year, and that's really because I'm a one-man band right now, so...
Yeah.
When we get, when we get the new guy, we have a number of big tests like that that are gonna be done.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, when does that expire? Soon, right?
It's already dead. You guys killed the list, uh, about two months, two, three months ago.
Okay. Alright, so...
Choose someone off the list if you even wanted to, because there is no list.
Got it.
Great, great, that really makes me feel better about doing it this way.
Mm-hmm.
And so you're saying that, that, that this position, which is called administrative assistant building, that doesn't sound, that doesn't sound like a good title. Um, in assistant, administrative assistant to the building, I don't know, but, but change that a little bit, um...
I'll make it fancier for you, Anne.
Well, it's not fancy, it doesn't sound, is this administrative assistant building? I mean, it sounds like a brick building.
You sometimes have to be a brick building to work in that department.
Um, okay, alright, so, um, I would like a motion.
Just to be clear, we're going with the, I mean, and by the way, I'll listen to everybody, 75% experience and training, 25% test, or exam.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna propose here. Yeah, yeah, okay, alright, okay, I need a motion that we, uh... That we remove the administrative assistant building from the administrative series eligibility list. I need a motion for that.
Yeah.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's step one. Uh, step two is that we are going to, uh... Uh, we are going to, uh, test for the administrative assistant building, um, through 75% experience and training, and 25%... Interview, what are we calling that part?
I would say, I would say examination, just say, if you say examination, we'll come up with an exam.
Okay, thank you, and 25% examination, so let me repeat, so we know what we're doing. I need a motion to, uh, test for the administrative assistant building position. Uh, experience and training 75%, and, uh, 25% of a, um, undecided... What was the word you used?
Examination.
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 Why that word's stuck in my head. Um, I would like a motion for that. Somebody?
Motion.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Alright. All in favor of... No, we're done, right? Oh, no, all in favor? I'm totally lost on this one. Uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, any, uh, uh, any nays? Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Is everybody happy?
Thank you very much for your time, we greatly appreciate it.
Great, great.
Okay, now, the next one is the tax assessment clerk, tax assessor, um, and Lynn Ormsby is here, so if we could grab, if Lynn, Lynn actually may be already on right now. Is she 017? Yeah, it's you Lynn, right?
Yeah, I'm just adding her, she's also connected via regular Zoom, so.
Oh, she is, okay.
Yeah.
So let me tell you about the trial, trials and tribulations that is tax assessor.
Mm-hmm.
And so you should all say a thank you to Lynn Ormsby, because she is doing a phenomenal job, I mean, so we are tax assessor left, and we have been in pursuit of a tax assessor for almost a year now. We have done mobile postings, we have had multiple people this close, and then they were either stolen by somebody else, or given more money in their own place. Assess, uh, the assessment field is the single, this is what I'm learning, the single hardest place to hire people, period, end of discussion. I am having incredible difficulties. Lynn has been acting as the assessor through the entire revale process and doing an incredible job. Um, and so, thank you Lynn for doing that. Um, so we have, in that position, we have someone who's been working for us for a very, 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 very long time, and it is extremely difficult to find assessment clerks. And she's been doing that work for, Lynn, I don't know if you can fill in the blanks of how long she's been doing the work, but she is full ti- has been full-time for the last couple of years. And the union is on board 100% with, with finding a way to make sure, to get her into that job permanently. Um, so... That is, this has a different angle a little bit, because assessment is, it's impossible. I mean, I can't explain to you how impossible it has been trying to find somebody to fill any of these jobs.
Wow.
Lynn, do you have anything you want to talk about, um, Alice's background or history or the work she's been doing?
I, I never, if I could interrupt for just a minute, I really, really don't, um, ever doubt the quality of, especially Lynn, she must be feeling... ever doubt the quality of, especially Lynn, she must be feeling, fielding awful phone calls uh, on top of everything else. Um, but, but my only concern here is that we stay within the parameters of what we have taken our oath about, and that is following the civil service rules. So again, I have to ask that we somehow, uh, to the town's benefit, uh, retain, um, uh, the employee that we have without going outside of the rules. And uh, is there any magic up your sleeve, Tom?
So, I, listen, um, if, if it works once, it'll work twice hopefully. Um, I would suggest the same thing. Let's remove it from the admin series and do seventy-five, twenty-five, and we'll give a test. Lynn and I will come up with a test that is specific to this position, the way we tested before, again, with the Excel and all that stuff. Uh, this job is nothing like that whatsoever. It's a clerk job, you know what I mean? You know, you're answering phones and stuff, but you're also, you know, you've got to use the, the software down there that is just so different than everything else, so. I think Lynn, Lynn, you and I come up with a test, I think, right? So, I mean, I think seventy-five, twenty-five. I would suggest you do the exact same thing that you did with the other one.
Um, okay, alright, hold on. Um. Regardless, uh, there are two factors I just want to bring up. Number one, we don't have an admin list. And two, um, this again is a position that is so specific um, to the needs, town's needs, that we do need to create its own entity. So from this day forward, that's what we'll do. We won't pick it up from the admin list.
I'm on board a hundred percent. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, any other comments until we start? Okay, so again, um, I need a motion to remove the tax assist assessment clerks, um, from the um, admin eligibility list. I need a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, thank you. Um, all in favor?
You signify by saying, yep. Need a second.
We got a second.
Who was it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Alice.
Sorry, I'm looking at you. I'm, I'm Mary Ann and Tom today. Come on, I can't expect it to, okay, so Alice, sorry about that.
One much better than the other, I'm gonna say.
I'm no Mary Ann, believe me.
Alright, y'all set, Tom?
Yes, I'm good, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, um, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody leave us? We only got two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four, okay, here we go. Thank you. Um, anybody opposed? Alright, thank you. Um, I need, are y'all set, Tom?
I'm, I'm good, yep.
Okay, um, I need a motion to, um, a test for the tax assessment clerk's position. Um, seventy-five percent experience and training, twenty-five percent, uh, an exam that would be appropriate for the position. Um, I need a motion for that, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Michelle. Second, please. Anyone?
Second.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, uh, all in favor of the testing being seventy-five percent experience and training, twenty-five percent, uh, an examination of some sort, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Alright, thank you. Beautiful. Okay, Tom, are we all good to go?
We are good to go. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and thank you Lynn, before you hang up, if you.
Yes, Lynn. Thanks.
Um, okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the provisional status of the custodian. Uh, um, custodians, where is this custodian?
So, so there's a little, there's a little bit of a story with uh, both of these. Let me, let me, let me, there's always a story, right? So let me, let me, let me give you the background. Uh, first of all, custodian and park ranger, both of them, uh, there is no current exam. It's on, it's on the list. Um, when we get the new person in here, hopefully we'll be doing lots of exams. Um, and it's all fully, fully our intention. Um, the custodian was a board of ed custodian who, his job was to deal with the pool at whatever that school was, that the pool broke. And the, the pool broke, there's no more pool. And so the board of, for years, we as a town have been paying for him in the board event. I don't, I don't understand all the stuff, but to take care of the pool, so, so we've been paying him, paying for him. So the board and all the unions, there are multiple unions involved here, and the town in the board all signed an agreement to allow this fella to come here and work on the town side as custodian, because we were already paying for him. So then it got to a point where that agreement was expiring, so we all sat down and just agreed that we're gonna take this guy on board here. And, but because there's no test, I can't just hire him. I have to just make him, I made him, I, the, the civil service rules allow me to make someone a provisional, um, only until the next civil service meeting. So I made him provisional, he's working here currently. We brought his time over, we treated him fairly, everything's good, by the way, people love him. He, um, but so now, there has to be a test. He is fully aware that he needs to take a test and qualify to, to, to get the job permanently. Fully aware that he has plenty of time. He'll retire if he doesn't, you know, figure it out, but hopefully he'll do well on the test. Um, but so in the next, so at the next civil service meeting, you guys have to approve my appointment of him as provisional. So that's what I'm asking you to do on this one.
Okay, so, the motion would be?
Just to, yep.
I just wanted to ask, this was a lateral move for him, salary-wise, benefit-wise, everything-wise?
There is, there's a couple little tickles to that. Like, he accumulated some time in the board of ed that we don't recognize. So, he lost that, I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you. And, and, um, the salary is a smidge off because they had a different uh, steps scale than we do.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if he will, so we're paying him at that original step salary. The person, when we do the test, they're gonna come in at our step range. And if he gets this job, he will probably lose, it's something like a couple bucks a week, kind of. It's not a big deal, but it's, it's something.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um, so the motion is to approve the provisional status of the custodian who is coming from the board of ed over to the town side.
Right, and by the way, it can only, it could, once, if you approve it, it only lasts six months and cannot be redone, so. I get, this essentially puts a clock on me to, to do the test and have it certified in the next six months.
Alright, six months, you said?
Yeah.
Alright, um, I need a motion for that. Michelle?
Yep, I'll make the motion.
And a second? Alice, we're calling you. Hey, what, why fix?
I just want to be at all the time.
It's okay.
Keep your hand up like this.
Yeah, just, yeah, keep waving. Alright, thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it sounds like a, look, sound like a good crowd.
Of course, yeah.
Okay, um, no one's opposed, that's, I want to make sure about that. No one's opposed. Okay, great. And on to the last item, and it looks like I'm almost gonna make it. Um, so again, the park ranger is the same background information that you're, you're gonna prove, go ahead.
A little, just a little different. So there isn't, there isn't a test, there is no list available right now for, uh, for park ranger. Uh, we have not filled a full-time park ranger in a very long time, so we haven't done a test in a very long time, but we will do a test. This is somebody who, um, the, the town councils, the board of finance, somewhere in that world in the, in the new budget, they eliminated this person's job, uh, in Parks and Rec and filled a job in the budget for park ranger. So it's someone who's already here. And so we, so the person fits perfectly the mold of doing that park ranger job. So essentially, we, this is preventing someone from being laid off. Um, again, this person is also aware that they need to take the test and qualify and score well on the test in order to stay there. Um, which I'll be coming back to at some point for that, but so, they're all, they're, this is, this is giving a temporary reprieve to somebody who was laid off while it allows us to, to, um, to do the test.
Is this again, a six-month provisional window?
Yeah, I appointed him provisional already. He is in the position currently as of July one. And I, if you say yes, the clock starts ticking, I get six months to either solve it or eliminate.
Okay, alright, I'm looking for a motion to approve the provisional status of the park ranger as outlined by Tom. Um, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Alice. Okay.
Got it?
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Aye.
Great. Okay, um, anybody opposed? I got everybody, so, okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
So, we're now through the summer world, hopefully, but there's gonna be, as you can hear, there's gonna be a number of uh, tests and things that are gonna need for you guys in the near future to, um, is there a time or a place or, I'm, as long as the law allows us, I think we should continue to do Zoom meetings. I think they're so much.
I agree, and so, as we get, uh, forum, yes.
Oh, yeah, I mean, but is there a time, a date, or a certain that would be easier for everyone to get here? Cause I'm here, they pay me to be here, day or night. So whatever you guys want, we can do a night, we can do a day. I think the noon during the day works pretty well, but that's based on you guys, so. So if there's, you don't have to tell me now, think about it, and if you have any restrictions or something like that, send me an email and I'll try to, like, say for instance, I can never do Thursdays. If you want to tell me that information, then I will try to find something that meets with everybody's schedule to try to find a regular. Cause I'd like to get back in the regular pattern as opposed to this, what I've been doing is just trying desperately to get you guys.
Yeah, yeah, but we got a lot of work to do, so.
We do, there's a lot coming up.
What were we doing before the second Wednesday of every month at noon, or the first Wednesday? I don't remember.
God, I think it was the second, wasn't it? It's second Wednesday, wasn't it?
Second Wednesday. So, yeah, I mean, for me, during the day is better.
Me too.
Okay.
That's good to hear, okay.
So we'll see how it goes. I mean, you know, if there's a day we have to eliminate, fine, but you know, great.
Yeah, I mean, listen, if we can't make the regulars, then the only problem is when you don't, when you do a special meeting, I can't, like, this is a special meeting, I can't add anything at the last minute. So like, I had something that I wanted to add today, but I couldn't for EMS. I couldn't do it because we didn't, do you know what I mean?
Twenty-four hours or whatever it is, yeah.
It's, yeah, forty-eight before the meeting, so like eleven fifty-nine, forty-eight before hand, I have to have it filed. If you saw me running to get it filed.
Well, I gotta say that for your first go-around, you did pretty well. I'll tell Mary Ann, she's had tough shoes to fill, but.
Yeah, again, I know Mary Ann, believe me, I understand.
I also want to say to the board that, um, I wrote a letter to the first selectman, um, praising, uh, Mary Ann and how wonderful she's been nine, this many years that I've been on the board, and even with the current members, and how she, um, you know, so I just wanted everybody to know that I did write that letter and on behalf of you, I mentioned everybody, said that we all feel this way, so I didn't want to kind of go behind your back. But I wanted to get it out before she had her retirement, you know, so.
Yeah, um, it was a great letter and the sentiment was perfect, it really was.
Yeah.
And we, okay, and, and you know, if Mary Ann is still, we're doing a lot of work. So, even though she's retired, she's still helping out, because I, I couldn't do it without her, so.
Dedication is dedication, you know, honoring the position and doing the right thing. I mean, that's what she was all about, so. Alright, thank you all very much, I'm off and running. Thanks a lot, everyone.
Thanks, everybody, I appreciate it. Great job, great job, thanks.
Probably see you sooner than I want to, right?
Probably. You'll be here for me. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, bye-bye.